Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Columba.
Present.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Present.
Counselor Woodland.
Present.
Counselor Baze.
Present.
Counselor Donato.
Present.
Counselor Felkoff.
Present.
Counselor Felter.
Present.
Counselor Cornelis.
Present.
President Siders.
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum, and this is a public forum for anything that's not on the agenda for a public hearing. We do not have any public hearings. Let me just, I will call each name one at a time, and let me just remind people that haven't been here before, the council has rules that allow you, that allow you to speak for two minutes, and we don't respond back to you immediately, and we will, so please follow the rules when you get up. Judy Antonucci.
Hi. My name is Judy Antonucci, and I live at 74 Capitol Street. I am right behind the construction at 73 to 75 Moore Street, and I am extremely upset about the height of this garage. It's, it was, it's built five feet from my property, and we were never notified by the town that it would be such a substantially different height than the original building. It's, the bil, the garage is larger than many homes, and I feel that this garage has destroyed the look of my property. It's, it's like having this solid wall of eighteen-plus feet just looking right at me from my yard, my first floor, my second floor, even my third floor. I cannot see Moore Street. The building is so tall. It's like, I don't know, I feel like I'm in a prison all the time. I don't get any sun anymore. I don't see the sky. I have no view. I'm sure in the summer I will not have any grass or flowers. I always grew tomatoes and vegetables and herbs. Needless to say, that won't happen, not even being able to sit out and enjoy my backyard on a nice sunny April day. I, I just don't understand how the town allowed this structure to be built without any consideration for the taxpaying citizens that are but this property. I, I find it heartbreaking, and I really hope something can get done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Ridge.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Ridge, and I live at 88 Union Street in Watertown. I also would like to talk about the construction of 73 and 75 Moore Street because I'm horrified by what's happened to my neighbors. I find it disgraceful that the town code allows a builder to erect an eighteen-foot building within five feet of someone's property without any input from anyone, that this was not made, that they were not made aware that this was going to happen, or they were not permitted to speak and raise opposition before this happened. I would like to know what possible need there is for an eighteen-foot garage in a residential neighborhood, and I'd also like to know if we're kidding ourselves that this will only be used to house or to garage cars. I mean, I already understand that it's being used for, that they've brought in plumbing, that they've brought in a sink, they have a bathroom, there is some form of stairs there. For what purpose? There's going to be a home office in this building, so all of a sudden, no longer is it a garage. Are we kidding ourselves? I'd like to know what needs to be done to have this law changed permanently. There should never be an eighteen-foot garage in a residential neighborhood. That smacks of commercialism to me. I plead with each of you to go to the backyards of the people that are impacted by this building and see the gloom and doom that they've now been thrust into. It's horrifying. This is a quality of life, life issue, and it has severely curtailed their quality of life, and they had no say whatsoever about it. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Michelle Larilla.
I'm Michelle Laria, and I live at 79 Moore Street. I appreciate this opportunity to voice my opinion on the permitting process for the property at 73 Moore Street. This property was nonconforming because this area is zoned for two-family. Occupancy went in fact a single-family home, a two-family home, and a row of garages that exceeded the thirty percent maximum yard coverage along the back property line were on the property. Section 4.06 of the zoning ordinance is clear as to how changes to a nonconforming property can be made and requires a special permit finding from the Board of Appeals to ensure that any change, alteration, or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformant use structure or building to the neighborhood. This special permit requirement was circumvented when the existing garages and two-family house were condemned. Since these structures were actively being used until the property was sold, there is no obvious reason to qualify them for condemnation. I think that the seemingly arbitrary condemnation of the nonconforming structures has allowed the new property owner to avoid having to obtain a special permit finding from the Board of Appeals. Others have spoken to the new property owner to modify the proposed changes, and he is unwilling to do so. It's not too late to remedy the situation. The garage structure is not completed. I would hope that the town would require a complete review of the building permit by the Board of Appeals so that the process provided in section 4.06 of the zoning ordinance can occur to give adjacent property owners back their rights to protect their property values. Thank you for your time and consideration of this real issue for us in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Richard Kalish.
Good evening. My name is Richard Kalish. I live at 270 Pleasant Street in Watertown. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be very brief. I've lived in Massachusetts most of my life, and I've had the pleasure of living in Watertown now for the past two-plus years. As a recently retired person, one of the issues I've immersed myself in are the issues of global warming and climate change. These are issues, as you all know, on a local, national, and global imperatives, but early in my education is my awareness and appreciation for Watertown's progressive stances and thoughtful consideration of 100 percent renewable resolution, the Climate and Energy Action Plan, and working with National Grid on the gas leaks issue, which is a significant one. So I thank you in advance for your, for your consideration, for your future consideration on these issues, and it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you. Diana Najarian.
Good evening. My name is Diana Najarian. I'm a resident of Watertown. I live on Capitol Street, and I'm here to speak to you about 73 Moore Street. I just have, several of my neighbors have already spoken, and I would repeat some of that, but I have a few points that I would ask you all to consider. First, I would suggest that it does not logically follow that condemnation of garages or any other structure should allow a person to bypass the need for a special permit. This type of thinking would encourage property owners to neglect any building that they don't like at this time, for whatever reason, and would allow them to then reconstruct it after it's been condemned. Second point, per section 4.06, and Melissa spoke to this, but I want to tell you to think about the size of this building. I've calculated that the footprint on the first floor is now over 1,800 square feet. The second story, I don't know what else to call it except a second story, has an additional 1,700, minimum 1,700 square feet, and a significant amount of that, and I didn't do the math on this, but a significant amount of that is over seven-foot head clearance. That's a full apartment. 1,700 square feet is the size of an apartment in Watertown. And I suggest that this garage is so large that it easily meets the criterion of more detrimental to the neighborhood and would therefore trigger that special permit which, hearing which was skipped. And the third thing I'd like to ask about is that per section 5.03 of the, these are all the zoning regulations, FAR, that's the floor-area ratio. It doesn't include, according to the regulations, should not include basement and garage area, and in the T-zone, which this is, two-family, you can't have more than .5 FAR. I would like to ensure that the calculations that were done for the FAR actually include that home office space that's on the first floor of that garage. That's residential space. That is not garage space. I don't think it did include that in the calculation, and I would question whether the final FAR value then ha, is in fact greater than .5. I ask that the town council members support our request for a hearing by the ZBA to appeal the decisions made by the zoning enforcement officer regarding particularly the garage construction, but any of the construction that's going on in Watertown, and I ask that you support our request for rational application of the zoning regulations, and you might guess that I'm referring to the definition of a story in this case. Thank you very much for your attention and your time.
That's all that signed up. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Please, you got to step up so that they can get you on camera, please, and state your name. For those that don't know, Mr. Jim Brown.
Hello again. My name is James Brown. I come from 83 Watert, Moore Street, which is two houses down and not in the butter. I've been there for 67 years. I've seen everything that's gone on in the house, and I just want to tell you people that this particular building is a Bradshaw Street duplicate. Bradshaw Street, we all know who we're talking about, changed the laws in this town about how can build a four-story house next to a two-family. This garage from my street looks okay, but you cannot see another house on Capitol Street that's over two stories. They've neglected to tell you also that there's five of these, not just one. There's five garages. The house he's already built is already above level to any house in the neighborhood, and we've been told that new houses are bigger houses. We have to accept it. That's fine, but when you start to build villas in the back of the garages, whatever you want to call them, from my understanding, you cannot have a second-floor garage. You cannot have it. It's illegal. So somehow he skirted the law to pull downstairs to accommodate whatever the zoning department wanted. Now, this is the problem. That's fine, but let's change the law. You're going to set a precedent in this town for any construction guy that says, oh, my God, all I have to do is pull down some stairs, and I can build a second floor as far as I want, and again, no matter what happens, he's already exceeded the limit. So whether he's doing this or doing that, he's already broken the law. I don't know the sections. I don't know anything else. He's already above the footage he's supposed to be. So that's automatic, cease and desist, get it down to a different level. We'd like to see it down totally. There's no reason for a house to be on top of a garage, and they also have bay windows. So I don't know how many storage units you people have in your house that have six-by-four bay windows, okay? So if you want to come by and see this structure, I think you'll agree with all of us, it shouldn't exist. Whether there was a mistake made, so be it. You're setting a precedent for the rest of this town with this structure. So think about that when it goes before the appeals meeting, and I thank you all for your help and understanding, because these people are desolate.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
My message is simple. Rip it down.
Please identify us.
Your neighbor.
Friend.
You needed to get your name.
Well, I have to give my name, too.
You're going to be an appetizer, you must be.
Bert Greenberg.
Thank you.
Downstreet.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Dickinson. I live at 21 Church Lane and resident of Watertown for about 20 years, not quite. I'm not a, I'm here to speak about the situation on Moore Street. I'm not a resident of the neighborhood. I am a Watertown resident, and I think that others speak much more articulately about the very particulars and specifics and technicalities. To me, this is, as a resident, a larger issue of what's credible in government and the role of our representatives in helping to really enforce what's right. I'm sure that there's a lot, a case that can be made and has been made, that this is legal logistic, this is legal, it's legitimate, but it does not meet the common sense test of what's right, and I think as elected leaders, this is a factor that each of you, I would encourage you to take into consideration, whatever role you may have, both formally as counselors, informally in your role as community leaders, to take an action, take a stand on this particular situation. It's a really an issue to me of credibility of government at the local level. Thank you.
Anyone else in public forum? Seeing none, I close the public forum. Before I move on, I typically don't do this, but I'm going to use the privilege of the chair to tell the community right, and the neighbors right now, that the developer came into the planning office today, and all work has stopped there, and they have to redesign this garage. Many members of this council have been out to the site. Many members have expressed the concerns of the neighbors, so I, again, I typically don't respond, but I think it's important, when you see a room full of people, that we are aware of the situation, and I may be bringing some things on the next agenda for consideration by economic development and planning to look at the regulations we have pertaining to garages. So I will leave it at that, and we'll move on. That's not necessary. Thank you all. Please be patient. President's report. First item I have is proposed modification to the resolution on the fiscal year 2020 budget process. As you're aware, we passed a resolution that said that we had to have the capital improvement program submitted by January 22. In speaking with the manager, the school building committee is going to have a presentation on January 23 of the costs of the renovations and expansions to the schools, so I'm suggesting that we move this out, move the presentation of the capital improvement program out so that we can include what may be needed for the renovation and expansions of the schools. So this is basically just extending out the date till January 31, given the fact that we are going to be getting some more information on January 23 at the school building committee. So I would like to have a motion on.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the revised resolution on the budget process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This was brought up at the last meeting, referral to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, the consideration of amendments to the assisted living overlay district of the zoning ordinance to make the affordable housing requirement consistent throughout the town. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 4C is a referral to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, the consideration of regulations for short-term rentals and new lock, new local options that may be available for them. Let me say that some of those new local options are, and even the short-term rental regulations have been passed by the state, so I want to, we want to be able to see what we can do to regulate them here in Watertown, and then we may have to go afterwards to economic development and planning for some of the local options, which may add some surcharges or surtaxes. So can I get a motion first for, for the referral to the rules and ordinances?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 4D is authorization for the town manager to sign a letter to National Grid to address national gas leaks. There's a copy of the letter in front of you this evening, and I think we're all aware of the situation. Many cities and towns have signed on to this letter, so I'm looking for the council to authorize the town manager to sign the letter and send it off to the appropriate people.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 5 is presentations of petitions, proclamations, and civil papers and matters. I'm going to take 5A and 5B together, and I'm not going to read these proclamations, but we were approached by a group of Nepalese people who are looking for potentially having a home here in Watertown, and they had two different celebrations that they wanted to conduct here in Watertown for their respective constituencies. So with the help of the council clerk, we were able to get them a couple of proclamations, and they were very, very happy, and they had the celebrations here, and they are now looking, actively looking to locate some of their things here and maybe possibly have a presence here. So I won't read the proclamation. The first one is an acceptance of the proclamation regarding the celebration of Lakokar, the New Year celebration for the Nepalese Garang Samaj community, and I know I didn't do that right, but can I get a motion on the proclamation? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is acceptance of a proclamation regarding the same celeb, the celebration of Folo Loker, and it's a New Year celebration for the Nepalese Tamu Samaj community. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 5C is a presentation of a draft plan by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council regarding the hazardous mitigation plan, and Chief Quinn, did you want to say something first? Please.
Mr. Martin Pillsbury is the environmental director of the Massachusetts Area Planning, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and he's been contracted by the town to conduct the hazardous mitigation study. It's been ongoing now for close to a year. We had the meeting last month with the committee, and this is the final stages where we can move forward and get this plan approved by FEMA and MIMA so that we can have a plan in place for the town moving forward. So, Mr. Pillsbury, it's all yours.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members of the council. Thank you for making some time in your very busy agenda for this, but I do think this is an important plan. I have a PowerPoint here which will give us a sort of a brief summary of this plan. The actual plan is over 100 pages, has a lot of technical data. I'm not going to begin to try to go to any great level of detail. If anyone has any questions for follow-up later, I'm more than glad to speak to people or receive emails, and the main point is that we now have a draft plan for review. It's available on the town's website, and we will have that up for the next 10 days for, until January, Friday, the 18th, and we welcome review and any questions or comments from the council, from the members of the public. So why is Watertown doing this plan, and what kind of a plan is this? There's many different plans. There's many different FEMA programs. This is particularly a plan under the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, which I used to say it's a new act when we first started doing this back in around 2005. It's not so new anymore, but what that federal act does is it sets a framework for communities across the whole country to develop plans that will help you mitigate natural hazards before they happen, help make a community more resilient, and this is in contrast to what had been in place before 2000, which was simply mostly plans about disaster response and recovery. What do you do after the disaster? No, those are all still in place. They're all still very important. This is adding to the community's arsenal of tools to think about what often gets called as pre-disaster mitigation. This is a program that is nationwide. Like I mentioned, that the goal that FEMA set out was literally every city in town in the whole country to have a plan like this. In Massachusetts, the Massachusetts to have a plan like this. In Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, MEMA, has been administering this program within our state, and their goal is to have 351 cities and towns have a plan like this. Watertown actually was an early adopter and had a plan put in place back in 2012. These plans do have to be renewed every five years, however, so what we are having now is a plan update that will refresh your plan, update it, and keep you with a plan that is in place for the next five years. So a couple of things to contrast this plan, like I said a minute ago, it's not an emergency response plan. The town already has plans like that. You have what's called a SEMP, a comprehensive emergency management plan. You have other kinds of ways of dealing with what happens after a disaster. This is a plan for mitigating natural disasters and things like flooding, which is one of the most common natural disasters in this part of the state. High winds, hurricanes, winter storms, and ice, potential other hazards that don't happen as frequently, but we do need to take them into consideration, like things like rushfires, earthquakes, landslides, extreme temperatures, either hot or cold, and droughts. So what is hazard mitigation? Once we know we have a certain number of hazards, what is mitigation? It's, it measures that a community can take to reduce or prevent loss of life, injury, and property damage by using long-term strategies before the disaster happens. And this emphasis on what FEMA calls pre-disaster mitigation, that term "pre-disaster" makes you feel like you're just always waiting for that disaster to happen, and the fact is, you never know when it will. So you need to be prepared. And to do this kind of a plan, basically we ask what preventative actions are being taken now already, because many of these hazards towns have lived with for many years, and you have a lot in place already. You're not starting from zero. So you basically take stock of what you have in place already. You find where are the gaps, where could you do more, and you ask what additional actions could you take in the future. And this plan lays out some strategies for things that the town can do to strengthen your resilience in the future. The underlying rationale behind this kind of a plan is to break the recurring cycle, as it seems to be in some places. Maybe not so much in Watertown, because you haven't been, you've been fortunate in not having a lot of severe disasters like some other, other communities have, but there's nationwide FEMA seeing this cycle of disaster striking, spending money on rebuilding, you have flood insurance, then another one happens, rebuilding again, and they wanted to see if they could put in place these pre-disaster mitigation plans to sort of interrupt this cycle and slow it down, and in some cases, stop it if possible. So how was this plan developed? And I'm here today from MAPC because the town is working with us through a MEMA grant that they got to put together this plan, and we, like I mentioned, we did the town's previous plan back in 2012, so this is a plan update. The town is coordinated through their local hazard mitigation team, and you saw the chief and the other members of the team right here, which I might mention, as you probably already know, you have a very professional group of people here, and it was a pleasure to work with them on this. In the process, we held two public meetings, the first of which was with the Public Safety and Public Health Committee last month, and the second being tonight. And at this point, the second public meeting is held at the point when we actually have a draft plan prepared, so that the public can review it before we submit it. These are the steps in the planning process broken down. We identify and map the hazards in your town. We identify and map the critical facilities. We do an assessment of the risks and vulnerabilities. We review what existing mitigation you have in place already. Based on that, we see where the gaps are, and we come up with recommended mitigation strategies. That's the core of the plan, and then the process involves the public meetings, outreach to stakeholders, and then finally, a plan approval and review process that involves both MEMA at the state level and FEMA ultimately at the federal level, because they have the ultimate power to approve these plans. So the first step in the process, identifying and mapping the hazards. We begin at a high level, pulling in what federal and state data on things like MEMA's floodplain mapping, NOAA, National USGS, and that sort of thing. We look at the state hazard mitigation plan and the data that's in there that's relevant for Watertown. The state has a plan like, just the way you do as a town, they have a state-level plan. And then, most importantly, and here's where the team comes in, we really look at what the local issues are and put it through the paces in terms of really seeing how these kinds of hazards work out locally within the town. There's a series of eight maps in the plan. This is one of the key maps here that shows the flood zones, and if you could just see the Charles River, as you well know, running along the southern end of town, and you see some bluish areas, those are the delineated floodplanes under the, flood zones under the FEMA flood insurance rate map system. And actually, having done these plans for many communities across the region, Watertown has much less of a threat to this than many, many towns. You have a relatively small amount of floodplain area here compared to many communities. Not to say it's not an issue, but you're in better shape than many communities when it comes to the extent of area that is delegated, designated as a floodplain. But it's not all just about what FEMA designates as a floodplain. We ask the question of the folks here who know the town well, where does it really flood when it rains? And when you have a one-inch storm, a two-inch storm, where do you have issues? Because in a suburban and/or urban community, you have a lot of places where the drainage system may become over, you know, taxed in a very high rainstorm, and it may not just be all about when the river flows, and you're on a river floodplain, but it could be local drainage issues. We look at data, as I mentioned, this, for instance, is a USGS hydrograph that shows the level of water in the Charles River, excuse me, at the nearest gauge where they measure this, which, there's actually a gauge just a little upstream here in Waltham, and we pick out here the highest rainstorm that we've had in recent years, in April of 2010, where there were actually two rainstorms about a week and a half apart. And you can see here the very high levels that the river reached here, and the normal level of flow this time of year would be about four on this chart, like where that line is on the left perhaps. You can see that this was a very, very major set of flooding issues. I'm sure there's folks in the room who remember what the impacts of that were. It wasn't that long ago. We, the town has identified, the team here, specific areas that are subject to different kinds of flooding, and we've also identified a few areas that may be vulnerable to brushfires, some of the open areas. So these are in the plan, and they're mapped out here on, on the hazard maps. The other consideration, that being that you're on the Charles River here, is that there are a couple of dams, there are a few dams, more than a couple, upstream of Watertown, which under a worst-case scenario, should they actually breach, could have some impact along the Charles River down here. Two of those are the Cambridge Water Systems dams in Waltham and Weston, the Cambridge Reservoir and Stony Brook Reservoirs dams. They're a tributary of the Charles, just a little bit upstream. And another couple of dams are further upstream in Weston, owned by the Mass Water Resources Authority. You get your water supply from them, and part of their water distribution system includes some fairly high-level reservoirs in Weston, the Norumbega Reservoir of Shanks Pond and the Weston Reservoir. So these are all, these plans have been, in recent years, all done on behalf of these agencies to understand what the threats might be. And there's example here of a map of the area that might be inundated along the Charles under a certain scenario. Now, these are all very worst-case scenarios. These dams are actually all in very good condition. There's a very, very low likelihood that you'd have this kind of case, but they, they're doing their due diligence in planning out where, where they'd have to be aware of the issues should there be a problem. And I might add that the Watertown Fire Department attended some trainings and workshops put on by the folks who do this, so that the town is connected in and well aware of what's going on in neighboring towns upstream that may have an impact on your community. It's not all about flooding. That's one of the major issues we look at, but other natural hazards are covered in this plan. We look at extreme heat, a few graphics here just to show examples, potential drought. In fact, just in 2016, we had the worst drought that we've had since about the 1980s. So we can get droughts here. They're not frequent, but when they do happen, they're a significant issue. We look at the potential for things like earthquakes, and we look at extreme precipitation, because it's those events, it's not just a matter of the average amount you get per year, but getting in a single storm in a single day or two, like those ones I showed you in 2010, can be, can be really what causes the greatest impacts. The next step in the process is we have out, inventoried here, and again, the team really gave us all this information, what are the critical facilities and infrastructure in the town, and mapped them out as well. And so to be aware of where are the key points in the community that you need to be aware of, should there be a disaster. This includes a mix of things, including the kinds of facilities that you rely on for your response, like your fire and police and public works facilities, as well as the kinds of facilities that may require assistance, like elderly housing, schools, daycares, et cetera, and also critical infrastructure like dams, pump stations. Of course, you have the Watertown Dam right here, and we just talked about the upstream dams as well. There are 82 of those sites that were identified, and here it shows how they're also mapped. All the green dots you see on this map are the various 82 critical sites that were on that list on the previous. I didn't expect you to read that whole list, but they're all in the plan. You can, you can see the details of them. And you can kind of see geographically, get a sense that the green dots, they, what you might expect, a lot of them are clustered around the center of Watertown Square area, and maybe out a little bit along the Mount Auburn Street corridor, and the Arsenal Street corridor is where most of them are, because that's where most of your critical development is. Another part of the analysis is to try to understand what could be at risk in the community under different scenarios. And so this is a little theoretical. It's a computer model that FEMA came up with called HAZUS, which stands for Hazard U.S., and it's able to take the building database of the town and calculate different hazard scenarios in here for hurricanes, earthquakes, or flooding. And we selected two different levels, a lower and a higher level for each of this, and ran it, and it gives you a dollar estimate. It's not, I wouldn't take these exact dollar amounts to the bank, but they're ballpark estimates to give you an order of magnitude of what, what kind of risks the town could face, should some of these very high-level, and these are, again, high-level events, not very likely to occur, but not impossible to incur. You can see there's quite a range of potential economic damages from these hazards. So it's part of telling you, it's important to pay attention to these issues because they could, they could have very serious economic consequences. And now let's shift and start to look about what the town can do about all of these hazards. What is the mitigation strategy? And that's really the whole crux of this plan, is to develop a mitigation strategy, where we looked at what you have in place already, and we said, where are the gaps? Where are the things that could be strengthened or updated? What further actions would help you reduce your vulnerability as a town? And then among those actions, could we prioritize them, set estimated costs and timelines for them? So that's really the heart of the plan. This is a list of some of the key mitigation measures that are recommended in the plan for your mitigation strategy. In the plan, there in a table that also shows costs, which agency or department would be responsible for, a rough timeframe for doing that, but you can see they're organized by type of hazard, like for instance, the dams. We have the Watertown Dam and the upstream dams, various other flooding issues, which in some of the local, local sites where those have been identified by the team, a few items, things like wind, multiple hazards. Multiple hazards would be increasing your capacity as a town with things like integrated communications and power, backup power, that would help you in many different kinds of hazards, whether it would be a windstorm, or the power's out, or a flood, or hurricane, or whatever. And then even things like extreme heat, which I think in the past maybe hasn't been looked at as closely, but with climate change and increasing temperatures and an aging population, because the elderly are more vulnerable to heat, we need to be thinking more and more about this. You know, in, in the average year these days, we get 10 or 15 days over 90 degrees in a year in the summer, and the projections are that by mid-century, we could be looking at 30 to 40 days over 90 degrees in the summer. That would make our climate here in just about 40 or 50 years feel more like Carolinas than it does here. So this is going to increasingly become an issue, and I think it's good to start thinking about it now. So these are, this is what the recommendations consist of, looking at specific actions the town can take to address each of these kinds of hazards. Some of them are town-wide in nature, others, like some of these flooding sites are site-specific for particular sites within the town. So where do we go from here now that we have a draft plan in place? Like I said, we'll have it up on the town website, open for public review, comment, questions till January 18th, Friday the 18th. After that, we'll take a look at what comments we get, and if we need to make any revisions to the plan, the team will do that. And then when we have the plan ready to go in, it will be submitted to MEMA. MEMA will review it, and then they in turn will submit it to FEMA. FEMA has the ultimate say. It's a FEMA program, it's a federal program. They will review the plan. If they require any revisions, they'll get back to us, we'll do that. If not, they will eventually issue what's called an approval pending adoption. That's important for this body, because that pending adoption means they approve the content of the plan. All they want at that point is for this body, as the body governing the town, to vote to adopt the plan. And there's a like simple one-page resolution, we hereby adopt the plan basically, that would come back to you at that point. And so once you adopt the plan, you'll get a formal letter of plan approval, which will be good for five years. Now, that's important, because once you have an approved plan, now the town will be eligible to apply for a number of FEMA grants to actually do projects on the ground. Drainage improvements, lots of different things of that sort, generators. So they hold having a plan approved as kind of an incentive, as a prerequisite to being able to apply for these grants. And every year, sometimes more than once a year, there's a round of this kind of grant available. So once you have this plan approved, it'll be the next few months of going through this review by them, you'll be good, you'll be set for the next five years, and you'll be eligible for those grants. What happens after the plan is approved over the next five years? The plan itself lays out a little bit of a, of a plan for implementation of it, of over time after approval. Basically, during this time, you can seek funding sources from FEMA or other places. Think about integrating the different recommendations that's in this plan into your ongoing operations, into your existing plans, your zoning, if you have a comprehensive plan, an open space plan, different places like that, your capital improvement plans, some of the projects that are in there eventually could work their way in there. And then as the five years goes by, in the midpoint, about year three, sort of take stock of where you are with what's been implemented. In year four is the time to start preparing for the next update, because it takes over a year to go through that process, about a year, and then conduct your plan, your next plan update five years from now. And I'm not sure if all of us are going to be here then, but that will, that will be the next step in the process. So that's an overview of somewhat long and complicated process, and I hope it was understandable, but I'm more than glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Counsel Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, at Watertown, have we ever done a survey in mid-year? I know we're updating, and this is a big update, is my understanding, but I don't remember seeing a survey of what's planned progress.
Just so I understand the question, a survey of what?
Well, you recommend in year...
Oh, okay. So this is what we're recommending for the, in the next five years.
Right.
The plan you had in place from before didn't have such a specific process laid out. In fact, that was one of the recommendations for FEMA. In the future, we want to make sure that these plans don't just get approved, and then we forget about them for five years. So now, this, that's why we have this in this plan.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Counsel Felkoff.
Thanks. Well, I really appreciate this, the presentation, and it looks like you've done a wonderful job, but, and I especially noted that in a couple of places, the recommendation was more trees, more trees. So that's definitely in line with the wishes of the community. But I was a little surprised, it discounts as the second public outreach meeting?
Yes.
And the first one was at a health, a board of health meeting?
No, the first one was at this body's Committees on Public Works and Public Safety, a joint committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
This body, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So that, I guess I'm surprised that this counts as the public outreach meeting when it's not a hearing, and the public doesn't have the opportunity to weigh in about it. And I guess I'm not, I don't want you to redo everything like I want to see the garage redone, but I, I...
Please.
Would like to note that.
Yeah, well, it's not a requirement that it be hearing. I mean, FEMA does not have a, let me put it this way, FEMA requires that there be public outreach. They're not prescriptive on like what form that has to take. The, I guess maybe your process is such that people can't comment immediately right now, but there certainly, the plan's up there, it's on the website, we can receive comments by email or, or whatever over the next, you know, week and a half. So we're certainly an avenue for that kind of public input, for sure.
Any other comments? Counsel Baze.
Yeah, I have a question. If I was, if there is a huge change, for instance, I was at a Conservation Commission meeting where DCR came and talked about the possibility of removing the dam. If there was a huge change, you know, a year in, and it was causing issues, I don't know what the dam, how that would affect the flooding, could we make, could we apply for grants based on the changes that's actually happened, or do we have to rely on the original?
Oh, no, you can always apply for grants based on what the facts on the ground actually are in the future as things change, absolutely, yeah. I mean, it's a five-year, it's five-year in the sense you redo the plan every five years, but you don't, you're not frozen in time for a five-year period. I mean, if things are changing, you... I mean, if things are changing, you ought to be able to respond to those changes, absolutely.
And when you, and we would just wait for the five years though to be up before we redo the plan, even if there was a change on the ground?
You know, that officially, yes, but there's no reason why you can't be incrementally kind of accumulating, this would be, you know, I wouldn't even recommend, because there's a midterm survey here, that you'd be thinking about what, as things happen over the next few years, what would go into the next update? Oh, take note of the fact that there's been some change to that dam or take note of the fact that we changed our zoning or whatever the case. Some of it's structural and some of it is, could be like regulatory measures. So it's probably good to be aware as time goes by of the incremental changes and so that when you're ready to do the update, you have a better sense of what all the things have happened over the last five years that would go in that update. Really, you're just documenting every five years what, it's taking a snapshot now and then in another five years, you're taking a snapshot again of what goes on, but things will change between those two points and you always need to be responding to whatever the current situation is.
Any other questions? Councilor Cornelius.
Thank you. Thank you for the wonderful presentation in great detail and summarizing this 124-page document. Very well done. Thank you. On page 23, there are some specific areas, locally identified areas of flooding, and this is more towards the staff. I know that Arlington Street and Keith Street are referenced as flooding areas and I'm certainly aware of that, but there's also the area of Laurel Street, if you recall, that that area actually floods out severely. And I don't know whether we're actually noting each location that's flooded.
You know, that's one of the reasons why we're holding this draft plan out. If there's another site that should be considered, that's why this is still a draft. It's, you know, absolutely. So, you know, if you could, I don't know if the staff already knows the details of that or if you could let us make sure we know what it is you're referring to, that's an addition or a change we could make, for sure.
Is Michigan aware of the area that I'm referencing?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor, Laurel Street is very well-known. It doesn't meet the same level as what the ones that are listed in that plan. And Laurel Street already has some improvements planned on, from the public works end there too, to improve the drainage down in that area. So it doesn't, it didn't fit the criteria that we were using to bring forward in that report. And there's a number of other locations around town that have, already have issues of investigation going on that are not in that, that don't rise to the level. Arlington Street and that Keith Street area there too, if you recall, that was substantial, much greater than what was occurring on Laurel Street. And Laurel Street was also some problems with the drainage system that wasn't taking it because of surface conditions, not so much as underground conditions.
All right, just as long as we are aware of it and there's going to be a solution there at some point, I...
Well, we're trying to get a solution for all of the problems. I mean, I think substantially, we've reduced the drainage problems around town in the last number of years substantially and we're going to continue with that.
Because I saw the damage and devastation that occurred in the homes and the bend on Laurel Street. That was very devastating. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it and hopefully we'll see you again in the future. Thanks to the team for helping put this together as well. Committee reports. First is 6A, Committee on Human Services Report Regarding Affordable Housing Solutions and Examples for Creating Affordable Housing. Councilor Palomba is the chair.
Thank you. I'm just going to read a executive summary. I just want to encourage folks to look at the full minutes and the attachments. We had four wonderful presenters and so they offered quite a bit, but I'm going to try to do this relatively quickly. I called the meeting to order at 7:20 on Wednesday, November 7th. In attendance were Vice Chair, Counselor Carolyn Bayes, Secretary, Counselor Susan Falcoff, Cliff Cook of the Watertown Housing Partnership, Kelly Donato, Assistant Housing Director of Somerville, Rachel Heller, Director of the Citizen Housing and Planning Association, Brian Costello, Executive Director of Watertown Housing Authority, Michael Lehrer, Assistant Director of the Watertown Housing Authority, Fred Reynolds, Chair of the Watertown Housing Partnership, Alan Oliver, Member of the Watertown Housing Partnership, and Watertown residents. Senator Will Brownsberger, State Senator Will Brownsberger, along with Town Counselors Anthony Donato and Lisa Feltzer later joined the meeting as well. I introduce the first presenter, Cliff Cook, a resident of Watertown and a member of the Watertown Housing Partnership and Senior Planning Information Manager at the City of Cambridge. You can see Mr. Cook's PowerPoint presentation attached to the complete minutes. Major points of interest included, Cambridge has made the development of affordable housing a major goal for many years. Presently roughly 15% of the city's housing stock of 54,700 units is affordable. Cambridge has devoted significant community preservation funds to affordable housing. To date, 109 million of CPA funds have been dedicated. Direct city support comes in several forms, including operating funds such as the CPA, direct permit fees, general revenue, and incentive zoning funds, capital funds, and city property. Cambridge has a large housing staff within the planning department and they have worked with top-notch partners, including the Cambridge Housing Authority and great affordable housing developers, nonprofit organizations, and housing managers. Cambridge's Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust, in many ways functions as the city's housing developer. It sets housing policy to distribute city housing funds and supports nonprofit housing developers. Cambridge has an incentive zoning program that requires commercial developers to make housing contributions to offset the impact of increased housing costs attributable to new commercial development. Cambridge's inclusionary zoning is based on square footage, focuses on family-sized units, has a permanent deed restriction on the unit and does not allow for in-loo payments. Counselor, I introduce second presenter, Ms. Kelly Donato, the Assistant Housing Developer for the City of Somerville. He noted that Mrs. Donato is a resident of Watertown, she's also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Donato's presentation is also attached to the complete minutes. Major points of interest included, Somerville is the most densely populated municipality in the Commonwealth. Similar to Watertown, the city is approximately four square miles, yet has a diverse population of 75,754. Somerville has approximately 333,000 housing units, 66% of which are rental units. The city has demonstrated a history of commitment to creating affordable housing and stabilizing existing housing. Some of the key programs announced during January 2008 by the mayor of Somerville include the creation of a housing, Office of Housing Stabilization, establishment of a transfer tax on real estate tax, transfer tax on real estate taxes, revise the condominium conversion ordinance, creating a new emergency rent stabilization program, and utilizing district improvement financing. Somerville's Affordable Housing Trust plays a central role, it's similar to in Cambridge, plays a central role in development of affordable housing and administers funds from inclusionary and linkage payments. Linkage payments have been incredibly powerful tool for financing. The trust also administers the CPA Housing Fund, which has been a steady source of funding. Between 2014 and 2018, the trust has received over $6 million of CPA funding. Somerville's 100 Homes Program has been particularly successful, working with the Somerville Community Corporation and the Mass Housing Finance Corporation. The program has created 50 units of affordable housing in the last two years. I introduce the third presenter, Senator William, State Senator William Brownsberger. See the fact sheet on the Massachusetts Bond Bill attached to the complete minutes. Major points of interest included, the Mass Bond Bill allocates 1.8 billion over five years and is used for a variety of programs, including support for public housing, for the development and preservation of affordable housing, and for the preservation of existing expiring use of affordable units. The bill provides critical support for maintenance of units at housing authorities, including the Watertown Housing Authority. The bill has also provided funding to protect units that can be converted from affordable to market rate by owners who have, after a certain number of years. Funds for the bond bill may be used as a component of a financing package for affordable housing creation in Watertown, depending on the size and the characteristics of the project. I then introduce the final speaker of the evening, Rachel Heller, who is the Director of the Citizen Housing and Planning Association, or CHAPA. Her presentation is also attached to the minutes. Some key points of interest, CHAPA's mission is to encourage the production and preservation of housing that is affordable to households with low or moderate incomes and to foster diverse and sustainable communities through planning and community development. CHAPA works on state policy also. For example, the housing bond bill was their top priority during the last legislation, as was the governor's housing choice legislation. CHAPA has expanded its services to provide the resources and technical assistance to help communities build coalitions to achieve community support for affordable housing projects. In addition, CHAPA works with many other state and nonprofit organizations and is able to draw on their expertise and experience to provide a community, a community additional services that they not, they themselves may not be able to provide. CHAPA has worked with diverse groups of communities, including Acton, Newton, Arlington, Exis, and Exis. Communities can apply for help and if a selected, CHAPA will work with the city or town to determine what they wish to accomplish and therefore what services they need. Services can range from organizing community meetings and facilitating discussions with stakeholders to developing priorities and creating action plans. I thank the presenters and note that the committee is hoping that at the December meeting, there will be a discussion of what the committee has learned and what policies and programs might be helpful to Watertown. Residents will be encouraged to present their ideas at the December meeting. Counselor Falcoff made a motion to adjourn. Councilor Bays seconded the motion, all were in favor, including, the meeting concluded at 9:32 P.M.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just kindly request that we add Alodia Thomas to the list of attendees of this meeting for the minutes. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 6B is Committee on Human Services Report Regarding Affordable Housing, Community Suggestions and Lessons Learned. Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. Again, I suggest that if you have an opportunity to look at the full minutes of the meeting, it was an extensive meeting with quite a bit of information from community members and quite a bit of thinking through by the committee itself in terms of coming up with lists of what we have learned and actions that we might take. I'm trying, I will try to read as quickly as possible, a short summary of that meeting. I introduced the meeting as an opportunity to hear from people who have not formally spoken during the previous meetings about what they think needs to happen to increase the stock of affordable housing in Watertown. Andrea Adams from the Department of Community Development and Planning was also asked to return to present some details on a rental assistance program. I first asked for suggestions from members of the public. Lisa Paul, a more than 20-year Watertown resident, said attending, said attended to the meeting to specifically inquire about the possibility of using the empty library as a possible source of affordable housing. She works at the Hebrew Senior Life and shared the organization's successful creation of affordable housing in Riviera, Brooklyn, Canton, and Randolph through the use of low-income housing credits, the low-income housing credit program. She outlined the program and how it helped to finance developments. There is a robust discussion about the empty North End Library. Some of the key points included, the site is very constrained and nonprofit CDC using housing credits may have a difficult time having the per-unit cost of production match the available rents of people making 60% of the AMI and paying only 30% of their income. Using home funds may be an option. It's hard to determine at this time how many units would be needed to make the project work. So much depends on the sources of funding and subsidies. The first step is to determine whom you are trying to serve and what their income is. Based on this information, developers have a number which they can use to apply for financing. A CDC would then look for other sources of income available from state agencies serving the targeted population. These are types of housing, there are types of housing such as artist housing, where you do not have to do required extensive renovation. The DCDP is aware of the need to think creatively about how to make different spaces available to different types of potential users. Counselor Palomba invited Ms. Adams to present her research on a possible rental-based assistance program. She used Waltham as an example because they have a very well-run and successful program. Ms. Adams explained that the person who is directly responsible for this rental assistance is John Shirley, who has 30 years' experience working with HUD. Waltham's rental assistance program primarily produces, provides security deposits to eligible participants. They have approximately $180,420 for direct client assistance. The discussion turned to whether Watertown might be able to operate a rental assistance program. Ms. Adams explained that there could be two present sources of funds managed by the Watertown Housing Partnership, home funds and the Affordable Housing Development Fund. Watertown's allocation of home funds for fiscal '19 is $8,940, of which $89,940 is program funding and the remainder is used to pay a part of the salary for the senior planning planner managing housing programs. Home funds are federal funds from HUD and are shared by cities and towns in the home consortium. The following point, following Ms. Adams' presentation, there is an extensive discussion below our key points. While there's money in the home funds that could be used for rental assistance, the problem arises about how to pay for someone to administer the program. Estimates range between $15,000 to $25,000, depending on the estimate, the number of applicants. You can structure rental programs any way you want, as long as it meets the criteria of a tenant-based rental assistance. For example, you could provide support for any combination of deposit, first month's rent, and last month's rent. In addition to the home funds, there's the partnership's Affordable Housing Development Fund that presently has a balance of $260,000. These funds could be used to support a rental assistance program as well, as well as pay a part-time salary for the program administrator. There is some hesitation on the part of the partnership as they often are often used to make emergency repairs on affordable units. CP funds can be used to support tenant-based rental assistance program. It is unclear who has authority to direct the housing partnership to develop a rental assistance program, is it the town council, the town manager, or the director of DCP? If the town was willing to pay the cost of the administration, to administer the program, who would be responsible for creating the program? Counselor Palomba, I thanked Ms. Adams for her presentation and input. I then shared a draft list of what the committee has learned over the last eight months. Those attending the meeting were asked to say what they have learned. You can see a complete list of that list and of both lists to the minutes. The question of what we have learned led to a very lively discussion among the participants and the committee. Two key points were the need to focus on affordability and the priorities and the needs of additional sources of funding. You can see a complete list of those points too in the minutes. I then transitioned into reviewing a short list of what are the possible initiatives that Watertown could pursue. One, support zoning reform on the state level, advocate for the governor's housing choice program and related amendments. Three, establish a Watertown Affordable Housing Trust. Four, support a real estate transfer fee that of 1% or 2% on the transfers over a certain dollar amount. Establish an accessory dwelling unit zoning amendment. We could use available town property, purchase additional property, and work with the local CDC in the state, in this case it would be Metro West Collaborative, to build an affordable or mixed affordable development. Develop a rental assistance program, update our housing production plan. Counselor Falcoff made two motions. Motion to ask the Watertown Housing Partnership to continue looking at ways to use the North Branch Library Site. Motion to make a joint referral to the Committee on Economic, to this committee and the committee and the Committee on Economic Development to come up with a proposal for rental assistance program. I asked the committee to refrain from action items at this time. Counselor Puccirelli offered his view that there are two paths the council can pursue, the building of affordable housing and the creation of a cash assistance program. He felt we need to have a plan and a strategy to build targeted 100% affordable units and to be prepared to leverage other funds so that when a property is available, the town can make, might purchase it. I asked, I said that I would like the committee to continue the discussion of what to propose to the full council, as well as consider a joint meeting with the partnership. I also suggest... I also suggest that the committee could bring back certain members who spoke earlier to discuss specific proposals, such as the creation of an affordable housing trust, and should consider inviting Mr. Shirley to meet to discuss Waltham's rental assistance program. The meeting adjourned at nine PM.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is the Committee on Media and Public Outreach Report Regarding Increase in Public Outreach and Community Engagement. Counselor Palumbo.
I wonder if Counselor Bayes would be willing to read the, since you wrote the minutes. Thank you.
So, the meeting was on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. It was called to order at five PM. Present were counselors Tony Palumbo, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair Caroline Bay, Secretary. Also present were Fire Chief Robert Quinn, the Town Auditor and Assistant Manager Tom Tracy, and residents Alodia Thomas and David Stokes. Mike Severance, Senior Account Manager of Everbridge, was there to present to the committee. The purpose of the meeting was to continue the committee's discussion about ways to increase public outreach and community engagement. Mr. Severance represented the company Everbridge, with whom the town has contracted for emergency communications. Mr. Severance's presentation was divided into two parts. He began by reviewing what services we already use and then presented new tools available to us from Everbridge. The contract we have includes the following: mass notification, i-Pause or Wireless Emergency Alert, Smart Weather, S-M-A-R-T, which residents can sign up for, audio bulletin board, and smart conference, and community engagement services. Mr. Severance said that the police and fire department were heavy users of the product and that residents used the severe weather notification. It was noted that the town is not presently using all the tools provided in the current Mr. Severance presented new applications that were phased in over the last year that we, these are the ones we are not currently using. Number one was FedRAMP. The town can create keywords that residents can opt into to receive information from different town departments. For example, if the town sets up a Watertown Rec option, people could easily opt in and receive notifications of field closures on their phones. Number two, mobile custom branding allows us to brand our alert app, creating an easily recognizable alert app just for Watertown. Number three, we can have internal notifications for a static group, such as town counselors or Watertown staff. This would allow the police, fire, or town manager to instantly alert a particular group of an ongoing situation. For instance, the town counselors could belong to a group and we could be notified quickly of emergencies such as a spill on Main Street. The police and fire department could instantly alert their employees of emergencies in town as well. Number four, in addition, if you anticipate emergency communications in advance, the alerts can be built ahead of time and automated to be sent out to the necessary groups. Seven different messages can be sent out to seven different groups. Different emergency instructions and messages for situations such as flooding, fires, or shootings can be tailored to the recipients, preloaded, and then sent out quickly to all applicable groups. Number five, there is an automated language translator that people can use for non-English speakers. Number six, Smart Conference is a free app that allows up to two hundred and fifty people onto a call. This can be used for internal departmental purposes as well as for the public. The committee discussed how we might use these tools to create more public engagement and what would be required to build awareness about the tools amongst residents. There was agreement that we should invite Mr. Severance to give a presentation to the town council about the Everbridge services and tools. Alodia Thomas said we needed a communications director in order to make us use of these tools more effectively. David Stokes informed the committee that it was difficult to find the town council notify me account because it is listed as council under notify me. In addition, the committee discussed two possible steps related to the notify me tool. Number one, creating a notify me account for the town manager in order to communicate to the public such items as newsletters, responses to requests for information from town counselors, and miscellaneous items. Number two, changing council to town council on notify me and including various items such as draft minutes, requests for information, impending action items, orders, and ordinances. The committee tabled this discussion due to the late hour and will put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Lisa Felton asked the committee to revisit the proposed action from the previous meeting. Following a short discussion, the committee decided to remove the action item. The meeting adjourned at seven-thirty PM.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is Committee on Public Works Report Regarding the 2019 Local Road Construction Program with Recommendations. Counselor Pichorelli is the chair. We will then take up two action items. Counselor Pichorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee met Tuesday, December eighteenth at the council chambers. Present were myself, the chair, Counselor Palumbo, Vice Chair, Counselor Woodland, the Secretary, also Superintendent Me, Town Engineer Matt Schuman, DPW Director of Administration and Finance Dennis Sheehan were present. Counselors Donato, Bayes, Felton were present, as well as the Chairman of the Stormwater Advisory Committee, David Stokes. The purpose of the meeting was to review the 2019 Local Road Construction Program and make recommendations to the full town council. Mr. Schuman made a presentation to the committee concerning the various methods of road reconstruction and the specific roads for consideration. There was a very lengthy PowerPoint presentation. Highlights from the presentation included a review of the road program goals and reviewing the various elements of road reconstruction, such as planning, notifications, curbs, sidewalks, and accessibility. The presentation also included updates on the 2018 road program. The proposed list of streets for 2019 consideration included Bellevue Road running from Channing to Common, Avon Road, Chandler Street, Burnham Street, Bridgem Street, Nichols Avenue running from Dexter to Boylston, and Bartlett Street along with the unfinished portion of Everett Avenue. Counsel Woodland made a motion seconded by Counsel Palumbo that the full town council approves proceeding with the 2019 road program as presented, and that was voted unanimously. Next, I raised, asked for additional discussion on the bullet point in the summary about funding collector roads and longer streets. The consensus was that this was a worthy idea, similar to what we did on the Common Street project. Counsel Palumbo made a motion seconded by Counsel Woodland that the full town council recommend that the administration add additional funding in the annual capital improvement program for collector roads and longer streets in addition to the annual $2.5 million road program appropriation. That was also voted unanimously. Finally, I related requests raised by residents at the school building committee meetings regarding fixing roads around the three elementary schools to improve traffic and asked to consider if the 2020 local road program should prioritize these roads. There was concern about diverting funds from roads already under consideration for next year and that there needs to be more discussion with the DPW and the school building committee on how to proceed with this. The meeting adjourned at eight forty, and the report was prepared extremely promptly by Counsel Woodland, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Palumbo.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if we might put into the minutes that I didn't ask about using some of the available funds that Mr. Me has on some repairs to Mount Auburn Street, and he noted that that would possibly take place sometime this year, so just want to make sure that we acknowledge that.
Are there any other comments? Counsel Pichorelli, you'll add that.
I will, yes, Mr. President. I will update this report with that, with that comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The, all of a sudden I have no internet. I see the agenda. Yeah, make a motion, please.
So, Mr. President, I would make a motion that the town council approves proceeding with the 2019 road program as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
For number two.
Next action item.
Mr. President, that the town council, I move that the town council recommends the administration add additional funding in the annual capital improvement program for collector roads and longer streets in addition to the annual $2.5 million road program appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E is Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Public Works Report on Developing a Climate Action or Energy Master Plan and Adopt It as an Addendum to the Watertown Comprehensive Plan. Counselors Woodland, who's the Chair of Economic Development and Planning, and Counselor Pichorelli, who's the Chair of Public Works, who's got this one? Counselor Pichorelli.
I'm going to read it. Thank you, Mr. President. So this report spans two meetings, one on October sixteenth and one on December fourth. The joint committees convene on Monday, October twenty-second. Present were Public Works Committee members, myself as chair, Counsel Palumbo as vice chair, and Counsel Woodland as secretary. And the Economic Development and Planning Committee members with Counselor Woodland as chair, Counselor Felton as vice chair, myself as secretary. Staff present were Mr. McGoon, Ed Lewis, our energy manager, also present at the first meeting were Counsel Falcoff, members of the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee, and members of the public. The purpose of the meeting was to develop a recommendation for the town council on how to move forward with the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Ten, Goal One A, quote, "Consider developing a climate action or energy master plan and adopt it as an addendum to the Watertown Comprehensive Plan," unquote. A proposal from the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee was presented to the joint committees. The proposal recommended that Watertown commit to the development of a master plan, and that it be called the Watertown Climate and Energy Master Plan. In order to develop an effective climate and energy master plan, Watertown needs information regarding both mitigation and adaptation challenges. To that end, the proposal suggested moving forward with, number one, a greenhouse gas inventory and energy assessment that would collect and analyze data on sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Watertown, including housing, businesses, municipal buildings, and activities, and transportation, and, number two, a climate change vulnerability assessment that would involve data gathering on Watertown's assets in terms of its residence, topography, landscape, infrastructure, municipal services, businesses, and transportation. The town would need to hire a consultant to collect the information and develop recommendations as described above. The report would go to the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee for consideration and would include town council and staff assistants in its review for the potential implementation of any recommendations. Other assessments in surrounding communities have taken months to years to complete, and the cost range can vary but generally would be expected to be in the tens of thousands of dollars, although there may be some grant funding available from the state. It was also mentioned to include the public throughout the process as much as possible. The committees then discussed a resolution that was drafted by the Watertown Faces Climate Change and endorsed as revised by the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee. The joint committees discussed whether or not the full town council should move forward with the resolution, and if so, whether or not the language would need to be amended. Counsel Palumbo made a motion seconded by Counsel Felton that the joint committees move forward with a resolution on this topic for consideration by the full town council. The vote was three to one with Counsel Woodland voting in opposition. And I would just like to point out here that Counselor Woodland did not oppose moving forward with this climate action plan. He just voted against the procedural thing of a resolution. Counsel Palumbo made a motion seconded by Counsel Felton that the proposed resolution be amended by myself to reflect the joint committee's discussion and be brought back to the joint committee's further discussion and review. This was a vote three to one with Counsel voting no. Counsel Woodland made a motion seconded by Counsel Felton that the full town council endorse the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee recommendation for a climate and energy master plan as presented, and request the administration identify potential consultants for the assessments, develop one or more request for proposals, and identify a funding source to be brought forward for town council consideration. That was unanimous vote. So that meeting adjourned, and we reconvene on Tuesday, December fourth with both committees. Also present were Council President Sideris, Counselor Bayes, and members of the Watertown Environment and Efficiency Committee, as well as members of the public. The purpose of the second meeting was to discuss the revised resolution, which was tasked to myself. The updates of the resolution included some grammatical changes, adding language from relevant authorities concerning the issue of renewable energy and refining Watertown's specific aspirations at the end of the resolution. Committee members and the public then spoke generally in favor of the resolution. It was mentioned that though the resolution does not mandate specific renewable goals, it does set a framework to help the town, to help guide town policy moving forward. The committee agreed to amend some language and to update the resolution to include the annual national climate assessment that was released in November of 2018. Counsel Palumbo made a motion seconded by Counsel Felton that the full town council approve the amended resolution, and that was unanimous. The meeting adjourned at six forty-five, and again, I want to thank Counsel Woodland for a very prompt generation of minutes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Palumbo.
I'd just like to make a note that I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, Counsel Bayes, on the report.
On the report?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was reading these minutes, I was confused because of the opposition that Counselor Woodland had. Is there any way to just add opposition to the procedural? Just because I was like, I was really confused because I was like, but he was for, can you just add that to what the opposition was for?
When a particular motion comes up, I'll give my two cents.
I would have no problem just.
But in the minutes, when it.
Adding a vote no on procedural, on a procedural basis.
Yes.
Not on a philosophical basis.
Just add the two minutes.
Whether it's there or not, I have no opinion.
We'll make those changes. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First action item is that the council endorses the WE3C recommendations for a climate and energy master plan as presented, and request the administration identify potential consultants for the assessments, develop one or more request for proposals, and identify a funding source to be brought forward to the town council for consideration.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number two is that the town council approve the resolution for a transition to one-hundred-percent renewable energy.
Did you want me to read it? Public? Okay, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Woodland.
So, as Counsel Pichorelli said, I'm not against any of the content of the resolution. I just thought in terms of process, this resolution was out of place. I guess, when you think about it, we just talked about the roads that will be reconstructed for 2019, that plan, and we didn't follow up with the resolution that talked about how important road reconstruction is. It's pretty self-evident through the actions that we took, that these are our priorities and these are important, so arguably, and this is my position, that we didn't need to move forward with this, that it was going to hold up the process a little. Something I mentioned during the second committee meeting, it's probably worth mentioning now, is that that first meeting was held in October. In November, we talk about our budget priority guidelines, where this council communicates with the administration what we want to prioritize with our limited funds for the upcoming fiscal year, and so because we waited and did some renovations to the resolution, this issue wasn't addressed after that October sixteen meeting, which means we couldn't include that in the budget priority guidelines. So, again, I'm not against the content here, just process-wise, I'm not sure that this really made the juice worth the squeeze in terms of expressing a opinion which was already in my mind expressed when we voted to move forward with the energy efficiency committee's recommendations. So, you know, the whole council's for this. It's great that we're moving this forward in this way, but, you know, these are some of the negative effects that can happen when the process is delayed through things that I think aren't necessarily pivotal into moving the issue forward, so just wanted to mention that.
Are there any other comments? I do have to applaud Counsel Woodland for stating the case that we had a meetings- I do have to applaud Councilor Woodland for stating the case that we had meetings before where we ranked by budget priorities, and now we're asking for some additional funds subsequent to that. So we're sending the manager a couple of messages here, so I do think that he makes some very good points in that respect on the dollar amounts that we may be looking at. So thank you, Councilor Woodland, for pointing that out. Are there any other comments? Councilor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I feel compelled to point out that it's not a, at the same time, it's not a new issue as it was in my priority guidelines 2016. So we've been having ongoing discussions, and I'm happy that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments on the resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your very well-done reports and comments. New business? Any new business to come before the council? Communications from the town manager? Mr. Manager?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Wow. Request for information. Councilor Cornelius.
Thank you. Over this past weekend, I sent out a request for information. Many of you may have seen the white Xs that have been tagged on many of the utility poles throughout the town, specifically in the East End, and I have heard that they are elsewhere. So I think we should all be aware of the reason why this tagging has been occurring and who's been doing it and under whose authorization, and I hope that the team within the administration is aware as to why this has been done. Thank you. And I will be sending this off in writing again. Thank you.
Councilor Falcoff.
Thank you. So a light bulb went off in my head this week, and I realized that all along I've been asking the wrong question when I make requests for information. It's, I, updates are fine, but what I would really like, and what I'm requesting now in writing, is timelines with benches and hard deadlines, or at the very least target dates and timelines for completing the following items that have been requested or approved by the council but not achieved. And they are designing Arsenal Park, having a TMA shuttle up and running, updating the town council on the status of the comprehensive plan, correcting and updating incorrect and absent and/or out-of-date information on the town website, convening the CPA committee, instituting the energy choice plan, listing all existing double utility poles in Watertown, the date they were installed, the responsible utilities, and a date for removing each one, and finalizing the study on the organization of the public art committee and proposing a formal policy about public art funding. Second request. I'd like to know if we have the capacity to write a press release about Watertown's visionary decision to require solar panels on new construction over a certain size. If we do, who would be responsible for writing this, and does it require a request from the town council? And thirdly, I would like a written statement from the police department, public works department, and/or the traffic commission explaining their position on why the winter parking ban cannot be modified to apply only when required by the weather with notification given via robocall. I noticed this was on the commission's agenda for a recent meeting, but the commission minutes have not been posted since May. Thank you.
You will submit that, please.
I've got one copy for the manager and one copy for the council.
Thank you. Councilor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three requests for information. The first is, given that this position is open to residents as well as employees, I would like to ask the town manager to issue a press release or some kind of public announcement about the exciting opportunity to serve on the new community preservation committee in the capacity of similar to a parks commissioner, as that position is not filled. My second request is that the town manager please share with town council a summary of how his recommended resident appointees satisfy the criteria to serve on the community preservation committee for Watertown. And the third is, I can't find the hazard mitigation plan currently proposed or a survey anywhere on the website. And I would ask ideally that a notify me would go to all users or as many as possible since this is not, hazard mitigation goes across many topics, categories. It's not just planning, it's not just climate, it's not just energy, perhaps as a news flash. Thank you.
Any other requests for information? Councilor Picciorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September 25th, I made a request for information regarding loud music at Victory Field with item number six requesting a written corrective action plan on how the recreation department will prevent future occurrences. We received a response on November 9th. As a follow-up to that response, could we please provide the following? A, a written summary of the meeting held on December 4th. We talked to Galston, Mr. Magoon, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Santola summarizing the agreed-upon principles that will be taken by the school department and the recreation department to avoid any future complaints by the neighborhood. B, the recreation department's proposed changes to Rule Number 22. C, the recreation department's written guidelines for the, quote, "reasonable level," unquote, setting of the volume for music and announcements, for written guidelines to define, quote, "appropriate and respectful," unquote, content, and a description of the process and how these were developed. D, the school department's written guidelines for the selection and broadcast of pre-game music for the appropriate sound levels for the various events, for definition of allowable lyrics that are aligned with our community values, and a description of the process, how these were developed. E, a copy of the draft guidelines developed by January 4th that were distributed for review, the estimated date of the final, and the estimated date that the final document will be published for implementation. And F, a copy of the final guidelines that the athletic director will distribute to each coach and player. And I'm kindly asking this information be provided prior to the use of Victory Field for any spring events. Thank you.
Any other requests for information? Seeing none, announcements? Any announcements? Councilor Palomba.
Thank you. My computer went down, so I can't give you all the details. I was going to give you the speakers, but I do want to mention that the annual Unity Breakfast on Martin Luther King Day will take place on Monday, January 21st. The Unity Breakfast begins at 8:30 a.m. at the...
Hellenic Cultural Center.
Hellenic Cultural Center. And it is, all are welcome, there is a $10 ticket fee, but no one has ever been turned away from this event, which brings in, which brings together over 400 people each year to celebrate and honor Dr. Martin Luther King. I should say the recipient of the community award this year will be Officer Tony Fiskus of Watertown Police Department member will be receiving the honorary degree, the honorary award.
Are there any other announcements? Councilor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just let people know that I'll be attending the Massachusetts Municipal Association annual meeting again this year, so I'm excited about that. It's over Martin Luther King weekend, Friday, Saturday, and just an expression of gratitude to the town manager and the taxpayers for allocating funds for councilors to do things like this.
Councilor Picciorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. On next Tuesday, January 15th, the Public Works Committee meeting will be meeting here at 7:00 p.m. to take up the matter of small cellular antenna sites located in the public right of way, and we have three petitions to approve, one on Palfrey Street, one on Arsenal Street, and one on Coolidge Avenue.
Are there any other announcements before? Councilor Palomba now.
I don't have an announcement. I just request a, can I make a quick statement?
Sure.
I just want to appreciate the folks who work so hard on this resolution, on the 100% renewable resolution. I think members of the Watertown Faces Climate Change, as well as members of the Watertown Energy Efficiency Committee, have put a lot of time and energy into it. I'm very proud that Watertown has joined many other towns and cities in Massachusetts to proclaim that this 100% renewable goal. I do think it is, like some other things that happened in firsts in Watertown recently, we now have a resolution putting us squarely in the forefront of achieving renewable energy in our community by the year 2030. So I wanted to just express my appreciation to those folks for all their work.
Are there any other announcements? Public forum? Any member of the public wish to be heard? Yes.
I'm Ann Munson, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of Watertown Faces Climate Change, which is a working group of Watertown Citizens for Peace, Justice, and the Environment and a node of 350 Mass. We wish to thank you for passing the development... Yeah? Can't hear me? Okay.
No, we want to make sure they can hear you on TV.
Oh, yeah. We really want to work on that. We wish to thank you for passing, for moving forward on developing a climate action plan and for passing the 100% renewable resolution as part of that. We also want to thank you for voting to allow our energy manager, Ed Lewis, and the WE3C to pursue the community choice aggregation, which should be coming to fruition this spring. It is seen by the climate change community as a primary and significant way to impact residents' greenhouse gas footprints, and there is not a lot of other ways to do that as towns. We hope that the contract will ultimately, the contract that's ultimately decided upon will fall in the footsteps of our municipal neighbors. Newton has recently established their contract, and they have, their base rate is 60 to 65% renewables for .47 cents per kilowatt hour increase over EverSource's base rate. Arlington has 100% renewable opt-up rate, and currently, they established their contract like a year and a half ago. Currently, their 100% renewable rate is cheaper than EverSource's base rate because of their fluctuation, whereas the contract allows you to establish the price. I just also want to mention that you can opt out of this at any point. You can opt out of it during the signup period, but you can opt out at any other point also for anybody who's not interested in doing it. Lastly, we hope that you will recognize that the opportunities to make important steps to address climate change should not wait until the climate action plan is completed. We just heard that it has taken towns many, many years to establish it. I want to note that the 100% renewable resolution acts as an aspirational and guiding document to keep the council and the town focused on this important issue until and after the plan is created and adopted. Thank you.
Libby Shaw with Trees for Watertown. I just want to thank you all one more time for your vision and the hard work you've put in over the last couple of years into making sure that we're on the track for really thoughtful, well-advised, long-term planning for our urban forest. We have a full-time forestry supervisor, tree warden, which is a really important first step, somebody who's really focused on this job. We have money for the first time that's allocated specifically for putting in, to place long-range planning for our urban forest so that we can do it efficiently and wisely and make sure that parts of town, that our baron of trees can get trees where it makes sense to do that. And as, as we just heard tonight, it is really important to make sure that, that trees are part of the planning as you're preparing for, for climate change. They have a very important role to play, including as we go towards 100% renewables. Trees are definitely part of the equation, and thank you very much for everything you've done to, to make sure that we're on this track and keeping, and keeping the importance of the urban forest in view. Thanks.
Anyone else in public forum? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?